The workshop for Tuesday, January 9th is underway. I'm calling meeting to order and our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
.........................................................
Thank you. As this is a workshop meeting, public comments will be at the end. We will start with our work session and the first part of our work session is the 18-19 Recommended Operating Budget and I will turn that to either Mr. Hamilton or the superintendent.
Well, let me provide a little bit of an introduction. We're going to attempt in the next 90 minutes between now and 8:30 to review both the capital budget and both the operating and capital budget recommendations with you. If you are a board member who participated in last summer's retreat, there should be no surprises in this. Obviously, there's going to be an orientation to the budget for new board members, but we have tried really hard in the last couple of years to focus our efforts on instructional improvement, on closing the achievement gaps and raising the bar for our students and not necessarily on budget process. So, our budget by design, we try not to have it live a life of its own. It does get involved in a lot of city process, which is extensive in Norwalk because of the different approval responsibilities of the council and the Board of Estimate and Taxation. But from our standpoint, we look to have the budget simply be reflective of the one-year plan as to how we're going to achieve incrementally the goals of the Strategic Operating Plan. And again, there should be no surprises here. We make adjustments in the summer to the Strategic Operating Plan. The budget should reflect that. There is the variable of what the city can afford and what is reasonable and sensitivity to taxpayers as well as the use of our students. So, the level that we're funded at basically determines how long it will take for us to realize the goals of the Strategic Operating Plan. So, I'm going to start by reviewing the budget goals with you and then I will spend less than 10 minutes on that and then Kristin is going to, Kristin Cars, who's our Budget Director, is going to take you through the budget book. So, this is the operative document tonight and we would encourage you also to go through this over the next week before next Tuesday night when you must send some budget to the city council per the charter deadline. And we hope that tonight we would be able to answer most of your questions and hear most of your comments, but there may be others that occur to you as you go through the document and we will attempt to be immediately responsive to those as they come in. So, we begin any budget with what we refer to as foundation items and these are all your contracts and things that enable the current operation of the school system to take place. Your big-ticket items there are your collective bargaining agreements, which affect every employee except my six direct reports and myself. And transportation is, the transportation contract, which goes up incrementally each year is another, is probably the second-largest item. And then there are a number of smaller items that are simply things that, contracts that go up each year and these range everything, everywhere from elevator contracts to cleaning contracts and changing the filters and the school heating units and all of that stuff. But that is what is in your foundation budget and, you know, we're happy that that could be accomplished at the 2% level this year. Frankly, we thought that would be more because our staff is growing due to the expansion of program in the high schools and you will see in this proposal that our staff will grow even more in the next year. So, in addition to the foundation items, we have seven budget goals and I want to review those very briefly with you. One is to provide or to continue to provide support for students enrolled in choice programs. I think members of the board are aware that in the state magnet school system, there is a $3,000 differential for program costs. Now, last year, you know, faced with the fact in our Strategic Operating Plan that we basically had magnet programs in name only because we weren't funding any program costs, we started the $1,000 per year supplement. I had hoped to increase that or to recommend to you that we increase it to 1,250 this year and then another $250 each year until we got to 2,000. However, our expense in this area, balancing other things in the budget that are equally important, our expense in this area is going to be eaten up by the additional students that are going into programs, into choice programs. And you'll see the big one here is the expansion of the enrollment of NECA to the Target, which is 400 students. NECA will have its first graduating class this year and it's important that next year it enroll at the prescribed level of 400 for an academy. There are also some smaller increases in places like Columbus. Silvermine will be adding grades as those dual-language students move up. And then the new one here is the media pathway at Norwalk High School, which will be open to students from both schools, very similar to the IB program at Bryan McMahon High School. So, the good news is that the response to these programs from parents has been very positive and very strong and we are going to have more students simply in the programs that we've started and I think we have to deal with that prior to, before we try to increase the amount of support.
So, where does it stand?
1,000.
Flat.
Staying flat at 1,000.
It's staying flat.
Yeah.
Almost as.
That's what I'm recommending. Again, you know, you can change any of this. You're the Board of Education. These are my recommendations. You know, a week from now, you have to make a recommendation to the council and it would be rare for my recommendations to be completely unaltered, right? You may have a better idea on something or you may view a priority differently, but this is in order to elicit that conversation.
So... Stephen, could you give us an idea of magnitude? I don't know if it's in one of these sheets.
It is in your budget book. On that particular one, on Goal 1, Choice Programs, that is, it's .03, Kristin, which translates into what?
About 2% of the whole increase in the budget.
But in terms of the number of students that were, we were attributing the $1,000 per student last year, the number of students that year versus this coming year?
1,017 is the number of students times 1,000 last budget. We put 1.2 million and this year, we're racking up to 1,563 at the 1,000 as well.
Okay. So, we have an increase of 346 students.
Okay. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Okay. And please do jump in with questions or comments as we go along.
What's the capacity here? We eventually got to increase the funding, but what if we find ourselves next year in the same position? It's a good problem to have. Don't get me wrong.
Well, it is and I think it's a question of priorities. We will always have to weigh different priorities against one another. My sense is that once we get through the high school situation and we have a high school that does not have study halls and offers 26 credits competitive with our neighboring high schools, that's going to relieve a lot of the growth potential of the budget that can be used in other ways. Goal 2 is the high school per pupil expenditure. Somewhere on your table in front of you is the detail on that and I wanted you to have this. This is entitled 18-19 Budget Goal 2: Eliminate Study Halls at the High School. We have backup on all of the goals. There is a sheet out here, right?
It should have been separate.
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah, all the backup is in the book. Kristin will be going through it as well.
So, this is simply a detailed chart and so I, because I want you to know, this has been very thought out, well-thought-out and it's not a guesstimate. This will tell you precisely what we need to do in terms of number of positions at each school and what areas those classes would be in, okay? So, it's very precise. Now, you remember last year, we had an expenditure of over $1 million to reduce study halls. So, this year, we had no student that had more than one study hall and the ninth graders had no study halls and so now we're at the point of the second installment, which is to eliminate study halls. So, as you can see in the backup for Goal 2, this expenditure will completely eliminate study halls. The other thing it does is it allows every student to take six classes or earn six credits per year. Now, times four years, that's 24 credits. That gets us very close to 26. So, the next and final installment of this, a year from now, is going to be much lower than the figure you're looking at here. In fact, it'll probably be half as large because we will just have to make that jump of one more class and the capstone. And the capstone, that is more of an advisory situation, so we're going to have to negotiate that with the Federation of Teachers as to how that fits into a teaching schedule. But the capstone is the application to real work of what was learned, the skills and knowledge learned in the pathway. So, when you see in the spring, when you see our proposal for the new high school program of studies at 26 credits, you will see that there are no more shopping mall electives where you can just take five different things.
Shopping mall.
I mean, that's the term to use. It was high school is shopping mall where you just shopped around. The electives now are in a pathway, so you would take five classes, but they would be related classes and your capstone would deal with, you know, for example, if you were in a music pathway, you might, as your capstone, you might compose a piece of original music, you might perform it using two instruments. I mean, this is like the real-life application of what you have learned. The research on high school suggests that this type of work increases relevance and increases the graduation rate and increases college attendance, even if the student does not pursue the area in which they were focused in high school under electives. You'll also see in the program of study that we're increasing a lot of the requirements consistent with state regulations, both in Connecticut and nationally. But this is the last big step, I think, for the high schools this year. The one next year will be smaller and again, this is a major accomplishment that we need to achieve relative to competitive high school program.
Of the 26, how many would be required by requirements and how many would be electives?
You would have five electives and a capstone and 20 requirements.
And what do we have? Now, we have a total of 20 and how many, in the same breakdown?
Pretty much 15 requirements.
15 requirements.
And four or five electives. Goal 3 is something I think many board members are familiar with. We began two years ago having problems and issues with how our Priority School District Grant was being used. We had a number of expenditures, some very large ones, that were, that should have been assigned to the local budget that were in the Priority School District budget. The problem with that is it prevented the proper use of the Priority School District budget to support Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. And we have come a long way with Tier 2, as you know, relative to our movementation steps this year. We're trying to expand Tier 3, but this is what we need that money for because there are no local funds for the tiered interventions. So, this is the last installment. Remember year 1, we took out half of the teacher salaries. Year 2, we took out the security guards and this is year 3, the other half of the teacher The fourth goal deals with the recent agreement with the NFT relative to a longer elementary school day or a normal elementary school day relative to other school districts. So, part of the quid pro quo on that was a daily planning period for teachers. We will need to hire a fourth special teacher. Currently, we have art, music, and PE in order to accomplish that. This recommendation enables us to do this in two phases, six schools at a time. So, six schools next year and six schools the year after. If you were, if you wanted to accomplish this in one year, it is definitely possible, but it would double this particular cost. And again, we're trying to get a balance of priorities here. And it also, I think, helps us when we can do something gradually or at least in two phases because we learn from the first phase and we're able to do it better and refine it in the second. At your meeting next week, next Tuesday, during the superintendent's report, I'm going to present some recommendations for how this fourth special is selected, how it is determined. I've had some very robust discussions with principals regarding this. Everyone's very excited about it, but everyone is also looking to it or toward it to help make their school special and to enhance. So, I think the old prevailing idea, which represented the status quo of simply restoring the library specialists, I'm not sure there is much support for that among our schools. There is strong support for a set of criteria that would guide the school and the SGC toward something that they feel would be most helpful to their school and helpful in terms of their school improvement. And again, I'll be presenting some specific recommendations to you in writing next Tuesday on that. Goal 5 is the additional school day in the calendar and the actual cost of the additional 30 minutes per day. And again, this assumes the school day and it assumes six schools. Goal 6 is the music pilot that we've discussed on a couple of occasions. I think some of the very positive learning from confronting the issue of pullouts at the middle school level, confronting middle school performance in generals, student performance in general, but certainly the contributing factor of the pullouts is that most school districts that offer instrument programs will offer, from a developmental standpoint, strings starting in grades three and band instruments starting in grades four. So, you do not have this buildup of all these students coming to middle school who in sixth grade need instrument lessons for the first time. And this requires our music teachers to pull students out by instrument for the lessons as opposed to other districts that have established this in the lower grades where you can now be holding sectional rehearsals and lessons in the middle school. It really cuts in half the amount of pullouts you would need to do based upon the fact that you don't have students learning the instrument or most of them are not learning the instrument for the first time.
But won't that, how will that change the schedules of the music teachers in the elementary and the middle schools?
Well...
They're going to have to figure out a way to, lessons and then they're going to have additional periods to teach music however they teach it.
Yeah. If we have to do a pullout, the elementary is probably the best place to do it because the schedule is the most flexible. You've got one teacher who has the children all day. You can do the pullouts based upon what the classroom teacher feels is essential for the child to be present for, what's the best time to pull them out for the lesson. Now, we've had a lot of positive experience with this in the strings program and we have a very good strings program that begins in grade 3. It is largely non-problematic at the middle school. I don't think you'll hear a complaint about it. It's worked out very easily. We'll do the same thing with the band instruments. Now, in the strings, we use a combination of full and part-time teachers and it will be likely that we will do the same with the band instruments. It's likely that the middle school teachers will stay at the middle school, or at least for the most part, be at the middle school. But if you could envision this down the road, a couple of years down the road, they will have a much more effect in terms of the sectional lessons and rehearsals and full band rehearsals and so they'll shift from the individual lessons to them. Part of this goal also is to get more students involved in instrument lessons. So, right now, there's a direct correlation in our four middle schools between the level of achievement and the level of participation in band. And so, our lowest-performing middle school bonus has the smallest participation in band and that's because the students who are in interventions cannot be pulled out of those interventions. And so, this is going to help provide an enriched education to children who need it the most and hopefully increase the number of students who can participate in the music program.
Just if I can add to that, even at the elementary level, we're adding pullouts. Are the interventions at the elementary level pullouts or teachers pushing in?
For the most part, the Tier 2 interventions in reading and math are in-classroom interventions.
So, the integrity, the teacher, okay, I get it. The schedule is intact?
Correct.
The schedule.
Dr. Anna Muskin.
Yep.
On Goal 6 for the music pilot, so it says 125,000 for salaries. Is that a full-time position? Is that broken out into several part-time positions or...
It's a combination, we think, of full and part-time.
Okay.
Again, very similar to the model we use in strings now.
Thank you.
Okay. Goal 7 requires some explanation. So, you'll recall last year, I recommended to you that we ask the city council for an enrollment growth appropriation because we had grown 200 students without covering those students in terms of their per pupil cost. So, that occurred. We have utilized those funds, I think, effectively and the additional teachers that are required, that was required by that. However, and so when we look ahead to this year, our enrollment projections show us to be within about 15 students of what we're going to be funded for in this budget. So, I'm not requesting an enrollment appropriation this year because we're close enough to be able to do this without asking for one. However, you will recall, many of you will recall, that last year, by January, we had, in January, this month last year, we had enrolled 50, just in one month, we had enrolled 50 English language learners. And some of these were the unaccompanied minors, which were being relocated from the camps in Texas. Others were simply immigrant students who were coming to Norwalk. And so, we had, we have 100 last year that we could not budget for because the budget was already approved once they were arriving. And then between the October 1 enrollment count this year and today, we have another 40 or so, okay? Now, we have to provide additional services for these students. In the state of Connecticut, there is an average cost of 30% more to educate an English-language learner. So, that's the standard we're applying to these students. This money will go exclusively to the ELL program, which is centralized and run centrally and it will be allocated where we have students who either are not fully covered by services or are not covered at the right level. Because as we have added these 140 students, we've had to fit them into existing schedules, existing classes. Many of them are too high and, you know, I would say that this is important to us because this is one of the many strengths of our school district. English language learners in Norwalk do better than they do almost anywhere else in the state of Connecticut. So, the state as a whole, this is the lowest area of student achievement statewide. Our state as a whole is not doing well in this area, but as you can see from our state accountability plan, our English language learners do far better than the state average or any other district in the state of Connecticut. In that sense, we are the district of choice for English language learners and in many cases, our English language learners have gone on to excel and the academic leaders in our school system is evidenced by our, the Bryan McMahon valedictorian a year ago. And so, this is a strength. We would like to keep it a strength. This is going to require periodically more resources in order to maintain our program at its current level.
I'm wondering if this is an area in which we could seek grant money from, there are so many organizations looking to target this particular educational problem and we are such a perfect test city, test district. I wonder if we could work on that outreach to it.
I don't know. We can work on that. That's, I think I mentioned to you that we've been approached by a number of foundations that are interested in the prospect of Norwalk being the proof point for the only city to close the achievement gap. As we are working with this group, Mr. Valenzese has been involved in this with me, it's clear that, you know, you get together 16 foundations, they all have their own boards, their own goals, the things that they want to own. So, our strategy now, we have this meeting coming up later this month, is to try to break this into segments so that a different foundation could take a piece of it, different foundations could take different pieces of it. But I think it would be a great suggestion for us to make that one of the pieces.
Sounds like you're...
Again, since our state is doing so poorly and we have a chance to do even better. So, thank you for that suggestion. So, that's Goal 7 and then we have one unfunded mandate. This is the program for students that have been expelled. We have some history on this. This was, at one point, when I became superintendent, this was under the domain of the individual in the human relations position and it was run for a couple of hours a day in the afternoon out of Briggs, what was then Briggs High School, now Pathways. However, the state regulations on this require that it not be in a school because these students are expelled from school. And so, under Mr. Costanzo's leadership, the program was revamped over the last, the past two years. It's run with a half-day program with a staff of retired teachers and counselors and administrators. It's been very successful and it was held at the South Norwalk Community Center. And now that the center has closed, we've moved it to the Carver Center under the good auspices of Carver, where we do not have to pay rent, but it's not a school facility. So, from our standpoint, this was not necessary because we were one of the districts in the state that was doing a better job in this area. Under the new standards, the program must be full-time and so we have to double the staff at minimum and, you know, if we end up with any full-time people, we have benefit costs and so on and so forth. So, Frank has been working on the redesign of this and again, our plan is to offer a full-time program... a full-time program at the Carver Center. The very good news here is that our expulsions have gone down so much. I think when we started, they were around 50 a year. We're down to 20 or under currently. We hope to get under that also.
What's the average length of an expulsion?
Well, it could be, there are some students who, according to state law, according to state law, there are a set of required expulsions for a year, where you don't have any latitude. So, those are things like bringing a weapon to school, hurting someone. And then, there are others that fall into a grayer area, where the principal has some discretion. Now, in virtually all cases, the expulsions are appealed by parents. And they come before, you, as a board under state law, you either have to hold these hearings yourself, or you have to delegate them to a hearing officer. Every district over 2,000 students delegates them to a hearing officer. And that's Attorney Larry Caffaro for us. And he adjudicates this. And he tries very hard to do it in a way that the student is taught a lesson but not destroyed in the process. And so, he's very flexible in some of the things that he will require that will be, that will shorten the period of expulsion. So, there are some students who are there for the year, and some others that are there for a few months at a time, at different times.
Can I ask a question? Do we have social services wrapped into the expulsion program?
We do.
Okay.
We do. Now, we pretty much, you pretty much have the overall objective of the student not losing a lot of ground, because they're out of school. So, the things that they need are the things that they should get, the things that they had when they were attending school, and set the basis for that. All right, so that's, that's our unfunded mandate. And we also, we also have the unfunded mandate of the team program, which is the mentoring program for teachers. We've made a small adjustment in the talent office to accommodate for that. That's in the base of the budget, along with the contractual increases. But that pretty much covers, you know, what we are recommending. The recommendation comes in slightly above 5%. I think it's 5.2 something, 5.3. And should either you or the council feel that, you know, we need to go a little below 5, I would come back to you with recommendations relative to some of the things we are doing now that are not as important as these objectives. But again, I, that's not something I'd be discussing with you unless I had to, and would come back to you with some options to consider. I would not recommend that we change or fail to move forward with any of the items here. All right, Kristen, I hope I was 10 minutes.
Let me just run, you know, I'll be hopefully very quick, because Kristen has the bulk of the presentation to give tonight. But I wanted to first thank a few people in particular. You know, we work with many people throughout the district, all of the central office departments, operations, curriculum, specialized learning, Ralph Valenzese's office, the talent office, you know, and with many of the schools, really all of the schools as well. So, I want to thank all the people who work so diligently with us over the last couple of months to put this budget together. And I'd be remiss, of course, if I didn't particularly thank Kristen Karsschmidt, our budget director, and also Nina Laria, who's back here, because these two women, believe me, the hours that they have been putting in and the effort that goes into putting together this document is pretty significant. And they have really both done an outstanding job this year of putting this document together. So, I did want to just touch on a couple things. One is, and Kristen's going to be going through a presentation, we're not going to focus on the budget book itself, but I did want to just orient you to the budget book, so that after the meeting, over the course of the next week, as you go through the document, if you have questions, you'll understand what's in here. It starts with an introductory section, which really reviews the items that the budget goals that the superintendent just reviewed with you. We do have in the air, again, for the second year, an all-funds budget, and we fleshed that out a little bit more than last year. And I just simply raised attention to it, because historically in this city, that was an area that, on the council, I know Mr. Kimmel may remember, as well as members of the Board of Estimate, periodically suggesting that there was not good insight into all of the grant funds and other funds of, that were under the control of the Board of Education. So, we now provide that transparency into those grant funds and other funds of the district. And again, Kristen's going to focus tonight on Fund 11, our general fund budget. But if you do have questions on any of the other funds over the course of the next week, we're happy to answer those. The budget summary is a high-level roll-up of the budget by object code, so it rolls the entire general fund budget together by object of expenditure, by teacher salaries, administrator salaries, supplies, materials, so on and so forth. And then, the budget by location is exactly that. It's a budget by individual departments and object code, as well as budget by schools. As you'll recall, with a student-based budget now, the school-based budgets are, at this stage of the budget process, rolled up into aggregate categories of high school level, middle school level, and elementary school level. So, we do not have individual school detailed proposed budgets for the individual schools. That will come later, when you reconsider the budget back in, or in June, after the school governance councils have done their work, and they have developed their school budgets. That will then come back to you for final review and approval, when the budget is ultimately adopted in June. So, we didn't miss putting those numbers in there. If you see TBD, to be determined, that's on purpose. And finally, we have a tab, again, on Fund 12, which is the grants fund specifically. And I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail, other than to say, we have taken into, as you know, we have a biennial budget that now was adopted by the legislature. We've incorporated that biennial budget, plus the additional reductions that were made to that biennial budget by the governor in, I think it was November or early December. And that's the basis that we have, you know, set these numbers. Obviously, as we go through the spring, if we see that there are further reductions to the PSD grant, or the Alliance District Grant, or any of the other grants, then we would need to adjust those numbers. So, these may be, you know, certainly subject to some revision between now and June. But at this point, we think it's, you know, a reasonable place to start. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kristen. And again, thank you for all of your work on this budget.
Hi, everyone. So, in the sake of time, I'm going to go semi-quickly through some of these slides, and, you know, stop me if you have a question, or we can just follow...
So, I think the board has the slides in front of them as well. I believe we have copies of those for the public also.
Yep. The book, the presentation, and then the two handouts, as Dr. Anna Muskin referred budget goal to, and then the list of budget goals that's in there. So, that said, we have it on the screen as well. This is just a recap of the 1819 budget category. And just to ground you, the 1718 approved final budget was 184 million. This just gives us a walkdown to get us to the budget we're recommending for 1819, which is 192 million or 5.3 percent. It breaks it down into certain line items, which, some of them are summarized and grouped together in the superintendent's message. Just to go through the list, the first one on there is the base 1819 budget increase, which is salary increases in our contracts, and that's about 3 million. I'm going to skip the second one. If you look at number three, it's the health insurance increase, the base of it, over 1718, and that's 383,000.
Here's, here's where we're seeing the very positive effects.
0.2%.
So, those of you that survived last year, right, with our $8 million increase...
I did a double take on that.
This is, this makes it all worthwhile, because it enables us to provide things for students that we would not have been able to do otherwise.
I do that reminder. Number four, our new positions. These are salaries and benefits, excluding special ed development new positions, and the six specials teachers that are included in budget goal number four. And then, finally, rolled into that are contract costs, program initiatives, department requests, such as technology foundation items and other items that we need to include in the budget to run the school. And that's almost 600,000. So, if you add those four items together, that's our foundation number of 4.6 million, or 2.5 percent, the budget as noted in the message.
I missed something.
Sure.
Yeah. For the high schools, the additional staffing, where is that?
Point two.
That's in number two.
Oh, two, two.
So, that's the program improvements in the strategic operating from all the budget goals.
My mistake.
Kristen, if you go, can you just review that? So, the foundations is number one?
Number one, number three, number four, and number five.
Okay. And could you just, number four, could you just give us a little more, or maybe you give it, do you go over that later?
We don't go over it in detail, but we can answer questions and address that.
Are you referring to Sped Development Fund?
Well, no, it says excluding Sped Development Positions.
I'm sorry.
It's the new salary.
And I guess it's, and it's excluding that. So, salaries and benefits, but new positions.
So, the new positions would be the specialists that are going to be required at the elementary level for six of the 12 schools to extend the school day 30 years.
You'd certify VDIs.
It's the music, the small additional music staffing. It's anything that in the budget goals that would require a staffing increase.
Right. And also... So, that wouldn't be in number two.
ELL increases in...
Oh, and the ELL staffing.
ELL staffing is a big part of that as well.
Yep.
Those aren't in number two, those are in this number four.
So, so all the new staffing is in there, but it's not, we don't have new staff floating around any other area. Everything is transparent in the, in the goals. This is simply a way of presenting it.
And then, the third, well, the second piece is the 5.2 million, which, if you look on the bottom of the budget goals, all of these items add up to the 5.2 million. And item six, seven, eight are net zero impact to the budget. That's just split out the special ed development fund in 1819, has 609,000 worth of salaries and benefits related to program initiatives, and then other expenses to maintain those initiatives. And then, we're assuming that the city is funding the 1.2 million as of this point in time in this year.
It has to be negotiated with the city, but we have not included that in this budget.
That's the third year of the agreement.
Third year of the agreement.
In the agreement, the third year was, the precise amount was to be determined?
No, I believe it was 1.2 million. How it was going to be funded was to be determined.
Okay. Well, I'm in this room.
That's what we had to do to satisfy Mr. Barron.
We need to determine that before March 1st, actually.
Luckily, we have that nice flush rainy day pack.
So, all of these items on here, one through eight, add up to 9.8 million, or 5.3 percent increase, to get us to our budget. So, the next eight slides in this packet are everything that we just went over.
Just talking about.
So, I don't know if anyone has any particular questions. You want to take a second to do it? Do you want me to stop on any particular slide? In the sake of time, I could just answer some pointed questions. Pretty good?
Sorry to put this, just for a little clarity, where are the textbooks showing up?
Capital budget.
Not only the new capital.
500?
Oh, so the 442,000 for consumables?
Yeah, they're in a 700, I believe it's a 700 series.
600.
So, the, so the short answer is, the textbooks themselves are in the capital budget, conforming to the city's rule of a 10-year life of capital and budget expenditures. The consumables, workbooks, materials, other consumables, which is totals about $400,000. That has been broken out by school on a per-student basis, and added to the school's per-student allocation. And then, the schools will be informed that they have the money, but they have to be replenishing these consumables on an annual basis.
And where is that? Is that, Kristen, in here?
You'll see that when Kristen gets to the per-pupil expenditures.
It's hitting account 641, and it's 87 dollars per pupil allocated by enrollment projection enrollment by each elementary school.
Okay.
There is a 705, in the operating budget, there's a 705,000 expense. It was moved from capital in the operating. I forget what the aggregate was.
Yeah, 641, well, it's an increase of 417,000 over the current year per budget. And that was moved, as superintendent said, moved to the student-based budgets on a per-student basis.
And these are the basically reno, these are...
Journeys and the...
Renewing.
Yeah. This is, this is, in fact, the, when we get to the capital budget, you'll see a significant reduction over the draft numbers that we shared with the finance committee. And after sort of digging into it further, it became apparent that most of the increase was related not to the purchase of brand new textbooks, rolling out the furtherings of a new curriculum, but were in fact ongoing expenses for these workbooks and consumables for Go Math and Journeys, which really don't belong in the capital budget, because what was in, what was originally proposed in the capital budget was for a multi-year period. So, it would have covered a multi-year period, but the bottom line is, it's not an asset that lasts for 10 years or more.
That's for sure.
I have one question on Goal Seven. So, that's the special ELL enrollment. So, maybe it's a pie in the sky question. But are any of the new students that are currently being enrolled and potentially in the future having the same issues, where students are coming in after the October 1st date, are any of those students from Puerto Rico, displaced students from Puerto Rico, and are there any wishful thinking federal funds that are coming to...
No. The, okay, so on the, on the, students from Puerto Rico, we only have about 10. We were not one of the districts heavily impacted by that. Many of our immigrant students are from Mexico, Central America, South America. And they come at all times of the year. They come when they can come, when they can get out.
Puerto Rico wouldn't technically be immigrant students, but they could potentially be ELL.
Right. So, very little impact relative to the hurricane in Puerto Rico. But again, you know, we, I think we are becoming the district of choice, at least in Fairfield County, in terms of English language learners, because they do well here.
Thank you.
As you can see on this budget goal seven, 98 that came from 1617, the higher year had 89 student increases. Still getting well, student in 38 already as of 10-1.
I think Craig actually shared with me some information. You have some more up-to-date information, Craig, on that as well?
Right. So, as of today, in addition to the 38, we've had an additional 17 who are already registered since January 1st, and we have 17 more that will be tested this week. Friday of this week, we'll actually have 107. This appropriation really makes up for last year's influx and prepares us for what's coming right now, about the year. So, any coming after that.
Wait, Craig, could you go over those numbers again? So, ah, so this, this number, this 38 was between 10-1 and 1-1.
Right.
And then, since 1-1, we've had 17 enrolled.
Enrolled, and 17 more being tested this week. By Friday.
So, that's another 34.
That's correct.
So, this year alone, well, so far this year, we're talking about 72.
No, it's more than that. 98 plus 38 plus 34.
98 was last year.
98 is last year's number. That occurred after the budget.
72 more this year.
Regardless, shouldn't we consider allocating for that in the budget? I mean...
You can. This is one of the frustrations of the early budget schedule. We have one of the earliest schedules in the state of Connecticut. And a lot happens after the budget is prepared and approved. after the budget is prepared and approved. We, we could, if you were to make an adjustment in that number, you would have to make it next, next week. And I don't recommend you going beyond the students that we actually have because I think we have to have that credibility with, with the council and the Board of Estment and Taxation. But clearly, there's 34 more that we didn't know about when we prepared the budget on January 1st.
Yeah, that's just in there with enrollments. If you don't have a hard, fair state, you're going to be, things, people are coming and going while you're alone. You would just go crazy.
Exactly.
Make a decision at a certain point in time, and that's it, and then you live with it, and then you make the appropriate, appropriate adjustments. A state does that, we do that with our own enrollments. What is it, Connecticut, October 31st?
October 1st, yeah.
1st, yeah. That's sad. Or we would just go nuts.
Yeah.
So that equates to, if we did add that, that would be 173,000 dollars.
And Craig, can you just give us a little color? The students you're testing, these 34 that, you know, we've had since the beginning of the year, are they primarily elementary, high school? I know we've had, they've run, we've had different phases and cycles.
Primarily secondary.
Really? And mostly from Central America? Any Venezuela?
I don't have the country break down.
Okay, I think, whatever, people are interested and want to know kind of what that impact is.
So this, it's new arts per pupil budget. I think there's a lot of interest to it. It's not necessarily new, we're just approaching it differently and treating it as we would other per pupil allotments and moving it to the SBB budget. Currently, there's a sliver at Norwalk High and Bryan McMahon spending that can be used for the arts, which includes drama, band, music, and art. And each school has different interests. So one of the reasons for moving that there, it will give autonomy and equity and, you know, let them focus these dollars on what is the interest of the school, obviously with some parent input and SGP input. What we had done here was we did an analysis with, you know, Greg, Diane, and we looked at how each school was spending the money that was in the curriculum budget and central office. One big pot of money, they call up and say, oh, we need this fixed, we need transportation for this, but it wasn't necessarily split out and allocated. It was, you know, calling and asking to think. If you look here on the chart, it's 1617 actuals. The first figure there is Norwalk High School SBB. That's what they actually spent in their own budget. And central office, they spent 126,000 for, a total of 141 in 1617. Bryan McMahon ended up spending a similar amount, but a little less, only because they didn't call up and ask for the same, for the same reasons. SBB, they spent 14, and central office allocation, that's 100, for 116. And there's also a piece that's district-wide funding for almost 26,000, and that's used for things like the Memorial Day parade, transportation, art, the art show, and district-wide repairs. So that total budget, we wanted to carve it up and project out how they would spend it in 1718. So based on year-to-date numbers, we did that analysis there, and we took all that money, put it in a pot, and said, how much per pupil can we give them to keep their funding equal to what they're getting today and equitable, or a little more? Came up with an 88 dollar per pupil allotment, and if you take that in 1819 times enrollment figure projected, Norwalk High would get an allocation of 153, 190, and Bryan McMahon with 769. They would need to use this for the arts, quote-unquote, program of their choice, whether it's drama, music, band, or art programs.
There, board members may remember, those of you that were here in 1415, will remember making the special appropriation to Norwalk High School for the marching band. And this, you know, this measure, or the way this is handled now in this budget, would certainly maintain that, but it will, it would also create equity at Bryan McMahon High School. Now, the schools have different strengths in their arts program. Bryan McMahon, after consulting with, with them, they would like to use it to support their theater program. And, but the point is that it will, it will have equity among the schools. As Kristen said, this is one of the few areas of the budget where they will not have the autonomy to spend it for something else, they must spend it for the arts. And so that will be a fund within the fund of the, of the school budget.
So it applies, Kristen, and I remember 1415 year very, very well. So this makes it really equitable between Norwalk High School and Bryan McMahon. So I remember distinctly with Norwalk High School and some of their needs, and it shouldn't be a matter of calling, it should, where we have it in the budget, and it should be very fair. I think this is great.
I can't remember, just to refresh our memories, that 94,000, was that just at Norwalk High School?
I'm sure I remember it being at Norwalk High School.
Yeah, so it was the marching band.
They were the ones that were.
Craig's suggesting that was different.
I thought it was the North High School.
No, that was supposed to go to both schools. I mean, that was Manny Rivera's proposal because, you know, he felt, and we agreed, that the, the arts were sort of scrouching around where, you know, there was a lot of money to support sports and not as much for the arts. So that was an effort to, to provide some support. But I think this proposal is a better way to do it.
It makes it fair for both schools, it really does.
Sorry, I defer. So having been a producer in my past life, there's a certain dollar amount associated with a production, no matter how many students are involved. So it, that, that concerns me that, you know, maybe you could put a dollar amount on what it takes to put up production on as a separate.
But I think what's been happening, Barbara, is they, like, for the theater people, they haven't been getting anything.
I know.
So I think to them, something is better than nothing.
Yes.
And you're right, there are these upfront costs, you have to pay these royalties, you have to buy the rates of this, da-da-da, but bottom line is, you know, maybe we're not in a position to fund all that, but at least we can get them going.
But we may want to look, after we pilot it this way, look and make sure.
So, you know, my understanding is that a good high school production, given the royalty fees and costumes and all of that, is about $30,000. Only part of it is offset by ticket sales. And so the impetus for this was actually a meeting that Tom Hamilton had with the members of the Bryan McMahon staff, and they wanted like $30,000 more, right? So this gives it to them, plus a little more. Because of the equity, they have more students than, than Norwalk High School, they have 200 more students. So my understanding is that they are very happy with this. Now, again, your, your point is well-taken that we need a year of this to see how it, how it plays out. But clearly, Norwalk High School has gotten more money than Bryan McMahon over the years because they've had a designated purpose for it, they call for it earlier, and, you know, they, they just get more as a result. So this, this creates a very good equity between the two schools.
Over time, if, let's say it turned out that they did pursue the theater programs of Bryan McMahon and they expanded the first rate, and you had families living on this side of town who were very interested in it, and their kids pursuing theater, would they be able to choose McMahon?
Yes, they would, they would have to choose McMahon on the basis of an arts pathway that in Bryan McMahon's case would be heavily oriented toward, toward performance, towards theater.
That's great.
I think Barbara brought out a good point, though. I think it's, I think after a year, we can kind of look at this, but I do believe that this makes it more equitable for our schools, having some kind of money that's equal for both.
Maybe when the year's up, to your point, we could do an analysis that shows they spent this much, and here's what they spent on.
That would be interesting, and also the number of students involved in the arts in each school, because that may end up being, you know, different than the number of students in the school.
But to your point, they did, by doing this, they receive an extra $50,000 compared to what they had in 1617, so it's a positive.
One of the other, to get to the issue, because we did talk quite at length about the, some of the upfront costs associated with putting on a production. So I did also indicate some willingness to sort of, we haven't fleshed out completely, but to try to work some arrangement. In the past, they've had some difficulty because they're relying on ticket sales that don't occur until the performance is going to be, you know, in April or whenever the performance is going to be, but they need to pay for the, you know, the rights to the show in December, you know? So I said I would work with them in some way to try to figure out how to bridge that, you know? Let them kind of tap temporarily into an account to pay the bill in anticipation of the, you know, the revenue coming in or something like that. So we are still kind of trying to flesh that all out, but I think that is a legitimate issue that they have that, you know, that, that we need to be able to address somehow.
So the next few slides are enrollment. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that or wants to go through that. The high school total of 41819 is 3663. Middle school is 2553. Elementary is 5064. NECC is 170, the projection, and elementary, so the elementary school total is 5234. And our total fall school enrollment is 11,450. And this was provided from Alone McGroom, who are our demographers, and we had used some, I think, for a year now, and following the year of studying the enrollment speed to be accurate and, you know, on the line.
There is one wrinkle here we do have in terms of Columbus, because Columbus now is phasing into a 8th grade school. So you've got a sixth grade there now, next year anticipated a seventh grade class. So right now, I think their, their counts are under the elementary. You see there's a notation, kindergarten through seventh, the sixth and seventh, of course, is related to Columbus, so.
Just on the NECC issue, I just wanted to point out that NECC needs more typical students. And we are, right now, we have slightly more special ed students than typicals. And we can't really increase special ed students unless they're in a ratio with the typical students. So we are going to be moving 20 school readiness slots from Brookside to NECC next year. That will enable typical students at any income level to enroll. Right now, you have to pay the full, the full freight if you're, if you're a typical parent, and we think that will be helpful to NECC. Brookside will have one remaining preschool, Brookside next year, and then, you know, again, we're looking at Brookside relative to the Montessori site for the, for the future.
So, sorry, what's our, what's our capacity at NECC?
212. It was designed for 216, it was designed for.
Is there any discussion about moving NECC to a more full day? That may be a barrier, I mean, adds.
Yes, there is. Yvette, would you like to comment on that?
So the school readiness slots need to be full day slots. So in our plan for next year, two of those classes with the 20 typical seeds coming, or the 20 scholarship seeds coming, account for two full-time classes at a 50/50 ratio, which is why there's a slight decrease in projected enrollment, because with the six classes running half-day, there are more full bodies. The full-day class is going to be capped at 18 to 20 full classes.
And we do have some students that require a full day of services.
Are any of the, of the special ed students there, I thought some of them were there full-time.
They are.
There's a whole number of students.
There's a handful, and they, and they attend a morning session, and then they attend an afternoon session.
Do we know the percentage of how many are full-time?
No, it's.
I'm not sure if I can bring them.
I'm just curious to know how many.
So most of them are, most of them, almost everybody there is half-day.
There's a small percentage based upon severity of their need related services that comes in 2011.
But a seamless full-day session, you know, would involve, right now, the students are only there for two and a half hours. But a seamless full-day session would involve lunch, recess, a nap, you know, things that preschoolers do all day.
And I guess that, you know, as kids grow out of, you know, NECC and go to regular kindergarten, you know, the numbers don't change appreciably of the, of the kids needing services, relatively stable.
That is correct, and all percentages are remaining. Just looked at that this morning, over the past two years, the number of students referred are remaining steady and in numbers.
So any growth in enrollment would be for the typical kids?
This morning, we were talking about serving the students in other school readiness sites that may need related services that don't require NECC or it's not the school of choice. So there are more than 200 or 100.
Kids, right.
Projected, but they're not all enrolled in NECC.
Got it.
Just also, Yvette, I'm curious to see a year from now, siblings. I know you have two of your kids, two of your young ones there, but siblings coming in, like how that's working a year from now, two years from now, if that's steady growth.
My oldest, my oldest one through the program too before.
For having an open house.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we.
If you want to join us.
It was like in the evening, we got midnight, like on a Thursday night or something.
So, if you're wrong here, this is just a graph showing you from 2011 to 2012 year all the way to by level. This is just the 1819 budget summary. It shows you by object series. This is also in your budget book. We touched upon it in the previous question. And email right before we walked in, maybe you hadn't seen it yet. For the sake of time, you know, anyone who feels free to email me if they have any specific questions on that. One, one thing to note, the other services line looks very, that's like really jumping out, and that has to do with the pre-class, we were putting facilities expenses, 500 accounts. That's really what that is.
So that was the contracted custodial services, the schools where we contract out custodial services as well as landscaping services were classified in the wrong account, and so we're correcting that in the next year's budget by putting them in the 400 series account.
You want to?
The answer's one of my questions, part of one of them.
Do we want to adjust the 1718 budget and track actuals there, or?
We could, yeah. You know, it would probably be feasible to do that. We can, we can do a transfer in general.
March 113.
It's about two and a half million dollars.
Get out of your pride.
And then the other question we answered on email.
Did you just send it to him?
Or then, I'll track them then.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Apologize for that.
My bad, I forgot some stuff before I walked in here. So the next slide is the per pupil comparison by level, and this is an interesting slide, an eye-opening. On this page, I'm going to focus more so on the high schools, since that's where we're adding a lot of the money and where the focus is. As you can see, the approved 1718 original budget by district-wide services, I just want to point that out, that that's not central office, it includes central office, but it's also services that are held in office accounts, but they're really forced, things that we have not yet put in the SBB, and it's across the district. It includes health insurance for new physicians, some reserve teachers that we're holding until we do the budgets with the principals, other transportation pieces, as well as staffing and things like the expulsion program and some other utility pieces. With that said, the column next to it is the revised recommended budget for 1819. You recognize those numbers, I'm sure, and then the increase. And then the boxes next, next to that represent the enrollment for each year and then the per pupil amount, which is also noted in the budget book. You can see that by level, high school, middle school, elementary school. And then there's also NECC pre-K, which we do not do a per pupil allocation, they just have a separate budget at this point in time due to the structure and what we are with NECC. So the highlights here. and what we are with NECC. So the highlights here are 1819, the high school per pupil is now higher than the middle school at 8405 versus 8016. And then the elementary school follows at 7051. This is really positive in why we had budget goal two. We wanted to put the money there because high school students really require more spending education than a middle school student. And bringing us to the level we need to.
Is this, is this basically as close to the standard?
So the standard in general is about a thousand stu-, a thousand dollar per student difference between elementary and middle and middle and high school. The very good news here is for the first time, we have a high school expenditure that's slightly more than middle school. Historically, our middle school expenditure was the highest than high school in the middle and elementary last. So again, this is a step toward, very good step toward normalcy in terms of, you know, reorienting our, our school district and meeting competitive standards with, with other districts.
So Stephen, are you saying that typical would be whatever, 6,000 per elementary kid, 7,000 per middle, 8,000 per high school?
Yes, at least.
Okay. So we were, I know, we, we're spending more money per pupil at the middle school originally, but with the middle school redesigned, we started shifting.
If you really think about a first-class high school, what it requires, I mean, it's expensive.
And you, and included in here is all the extracurriculars, sports, clubs, all of those, all of those things that expenses that you don't have at the middle school level.
I was floored by that business curriculum, Greg shared with us. I had no idea we were given that kind of robust program.
And that, that will be a pathway.
And bringing it up more, you know.
You should meet the teacher who teaches the entrepreneurship. She's really good. I mean, she's really good.
Hey, Kristen.
So on the bottom there as well, you can see the other drivers of how many schools per pupil amount. The music arts grade class, the elimination of study hall, which is the budget goal two. And then the magnet allocation that you saw also in the budget goal one. And then one thing we decided to do this year was move the nurses' salaries to each of these. So the financial SVP and a few other minor adjustments of 62. So that would add to the funding there as well.
By moving it, the nurse's salaries to the, to the schools, that doesn't mean they have any flexibility inside on hours and things like that. There must be state standards, right?
Right.
There are, I think the impetus for this was that Brian McMahon had a half a nurse less than Norwalk High School.
And Norwalk High had more kids.
And Norwalk High had fewer children, yeah.
Fewer kids. Yeah, McMahon's way bigger.
So, so yes, they will, they will each have to have the standard number of nurses. And there are state standards for this. We have our own standards. Our, our head nurse, Joanne Malinowski, enforces all this. And, but this, this will now be in the school budget. So it is possible for a school that, you know, might set this as a priority to have more than one nurse, but they are going to have a minimum of one.
And could the difference between McMahon and Norwalk High might be because there's one of those Applebee's state health centers at McMahon? I don't, there isn't one in Norwalk High, right?
I think there is one. There is one at Norwalk High School.
There is one up there. I didn't know.
Have any of the schools traditionally shared physicians? So if two schools say they, they don't have enough for another, I mean, and I'll use the nurses as an example, but enough for another full-time nurse, but they both could use part-time, could they have schools in Norwalk split positions?
So there, there are schools in the state that, that are small schools that do share nurses. There are schools, small schools in the state that share principals. So if you were to go to Eastern Connecticut, for example, you would find that a school the size of Woodpit, Wolfpit and Columbus would have one principal. They would probably have one nurse. That is not so much the case in Fairfield County. So.
I'm just thinking that as schools have more autonomy with their school governance councils, that that may be something to think about for specials or extracurriculars. Are, are there ways to save resources by sharing physicians?
Absolutely. And particularly in Wolfpit's case, this, this may be needed in the future.
The strings teachers currently do split between pre- and elementary school area.
And we did that also Julie, with, in middle school, we have Japanese being taught, both Roten and Honus. And now there's one teacher who goes back and forth.
Just, just as a point though, the difference between a school having, for instance, 10 asthmatics versus 20 is, is not a numerical difference, which might lead to not having a nurse at a school where there could be a disaster.
And there's travel time involved and everything else.
It's not just a numbers issue.
You're right. There's a certain amount of overhead that every school has to have.
Yeah, of course.
And nurses are different.
Right.
Gym teacher or something like that. Safety factor.
Okay, so the next slide is health insurance.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump on health insurance here. And I guess, you know, what a difference a year makes. Where we were a year ago, this of course was the big problem, the big budget crisis really for us. And now what you see really is the impact of moving to the state 2.0 health insurance plan and the impact on our operating budget. This is no longer a driver for us. The total budget increase in health insurance next year is pegged at 2.5% or about $600,000. About 222,000 of that is related to the new positions that are, are part of the budget request, part of the, you know, the program enhancements, the additional teachers at high school level and so on. So, you know, that 600,000 or two and a half percent increase includes that amount for the additional staff. The actual top-line cost is expected to go down. And the reason it's expected to go down is that, you may recall that as we negotiated with our collective bargaining groups last year, the state at the same time was negotiating with the Cback state bargaining groups over changes to the state health plan. And because of sort of that overlap in negotiation, the district agreed not to roll out any of the changes that were agreed as part of that Cback agreement until July 1 of 2018. So the rates for next year are expected to decline slightly compared to the current rates that we're paying. We are paying a fixed rate for employee-only coverage, employee plus one or family coverage. And those rates currently range from $861 a month for employee-only coverage to 2,0264 a month for family coverage. The numbers that we're using for next year, the state has not actually published numbers for the period starting July. They have published numbers for the period starting April 1. So they've published numbers for April 1 to June 30. We have assumed based on recommendation from our health insurance consultant to take the current April numbers and roll them up by three and a quarter percent, which would bring the rates next year to 829 for employee-only coverage, 1779 for employee plus one, and 2175 for family coverage. The rates are higher for retirees, both retirees who are pre-65 as well as we have a few post-retire, post-65 retirees who we have the highest rates on of all. But most of our claim experience or most of our cost is for active employees and pays those rates I just quoted. I do want to also touch on the insurance fund and where we are with respect to the insurance fund. Now, when the plan was essentially a self-funded plan under Anthem, it was important for us to maintain a significant reserve, which we did. We are now drawing down that reserve. And you'll see on the budget schedule that in the current fiscal year, the plan, planned drawdown on that insurance fund balance was budgeted at $3,447,830. We have run updated projections, which indicate that the actual drawdown may be slightly larger than that. The projection right now is about 3.7 million, but we're still, you know, refining that figure. But it's more or less in line with what we had expected. We would now expect to end the fiscal year with our insurance fund having a balance of about $3.1 million in it. And the budget next year anticipates a reduced drawdown of that fund balance of $1,650,000, which would then leave about $1.4 million to draw down as the final drawdown of the insurance fund in fiscal year 1819, or sorry, 1920. So this puts us on a, what I think is a fairly sustainable glide path. One of the recommendations all along had been to draw down that insurance fund balance incrementally in smaller amounts each year so that we don't fall off the cliff in the year that the insurance fund is no longer there available to draw down on. So again, current fiscal year, the budget was predicated on about a $3.5 million draw. Next year, the budget's predicated on a $1,650,000 draw. And then the following year, that would, we would reduce that to about 1.4 million. So overall, I think we're, you know, very pleased with the performance and the transition to the state 2.0 health plan. It's obviously generated significant savings for us in the current year. And it's provided some predictability in expenses going forward for next year's budget.
How are we provided for, for the, lack of a better word, the legacy stop-loss limit coverage we had on experiences over a quarter million? Does that fall under, is there a provision under 2.0 for that? Or do we still maintain that?
We're essentially fully insured with the state. The state is, pays, pays the claims. We're, we're paying them a fixed monthly premium for employee based on employee only, employee plus one, or full family coverage. So we no longer have or need that stop-loss provision. We did have a stop-loss provision in place on the old health insurance plan. And that, in fact, did kick in and was accessed in a number of cases when claims exceeded that $250,000 attachment point. But now with the state plan, really the state's on the hook. If our claims run higher than, than the cost, the state's responsible for that.
Okay, good. And that, that applies for the city as well then?
If the city, city moves to 2.0, that would be true.
Okay, city as well.
Last slide related to the operating budget is the graph here for 1819 grants budget is projected at 17.5 million. Obviously, this is a point in time based on the best knowledge we have. Things can change, but we think it's a pretty good estimate for that year. And in your budget book, just to note, this graph, as well as the detail behind it by object code, is on page six, page five and six in the budget book, just as a record to page one. We'll get more detail. Alliance is in there at 955,000. Title one is in there at 2.3 million. PSD grant is in there at 3.3. IDBA, which is a special education grant, is in there at 2.2 million. School readiness, which is not, you know, we manage it all here, but it's not in our budget so to say, is wrapped at 5.4 million. A T S, 1.6 million. And all other grants rack up to about 7 million. And the book on page six, it lists what we're calling all of the grants, which are grants, but you know, there may not be official grants. Title one, title two, school readiness, percent or percent of grants are assuming the 100,000 instead of double.
So are all of these grants assumed that these funds would be available for 1819?
Correct. This is our.
These are, these are estimates, subject to change. The, the title one, believe it or not, the federal funding is the most stable at this point.
Right.
Under, with the title one, the greatest variability is going to be in the priority school district grant, because that will be subject to rescission as the year goes on.
The good news on that is that we at least have removed those sort of core instructional items that had to be provided no matter what. Now there's at least a little bit more flexibility to adjust some of those programs to kind of meet the available funding.
Just to make everyone aware, as you know, the alliance grant has the I S D in it, and it does still cover that as far as the projections go.
Anything else? Is that it? Okay, so we're just going to take a breath here and see if you have any questions or comments on the operating budget so far before Tom reviews the capital budget. Kristen, you've got a question.
The idea, I missed it yesterday. I just, I just noticed when I was looking at the excess costs in state agency above that. Object code 56263, the special ed out of district, wishing, it's, it's a minus 571125. Is this something we attribute directly to the turnout?
Absolutely.
And so we're pushing a half a million dollars. And I understand this is going to be a transition, okay? And we can't expect immediate everything, zero something just before it's completed in the third year. But how does that measure up to our expectations of what would happen?
That's, that's, that's a very good question. Yvette, can you give a perspective on that?
Again, we had a presentation to the, probably about six to eight weeks ago. And the 1.2 projected for next year talks about new program initiatives that will further improve our ability to provide access and services at a very high quality using our own internal staff. It builds upon models of co-teaching, for example, as well as an extension to our 18 to 21-year-old programs. So that is hardcore program development in year three. There is a modest request for consideration in year four to just continue until we can completely deploy it outside of that request. How it is funded, as Dr. Adonoff already said, is the discussion of that one. New program development, most of the existing program development from year one and two has been absorbed.
You know, I, I think when, at the time of the crack of it, the outside placements were growing each year significantly. I think that our initial hope at that point was that they would level off and we could cap them at some point as a result of offering more in-house programs. So I think we've, in that sense, we're probably a little beyond that in terms of success. But we, as, as Yvette points out, we, we have a ways to go as, as well. And so very, the dyslexia clinic, I think, is going to play a significant role in this. The new audiologic, audiological booth and, and hearing impaired program is going to play a role. You know, this is a, we have a variety of students. These are all individual needs. But many, we are capable of meeting within, within the district. And our premise is that we can provide a better service, a higher quality service at a more reasonable cost.
My concern is listening to the discussion over the last, I guess, year on the need to truly create proper infrastructure. So our magnet schools are truly magnet schools. They have to have the, the ability to provide what they say they're going to do on paper. We can't make that, let's say, we can't make the same mistake with special ed where we provide on paper a variety of things. Because, number one, it's a disservice to the kids. And number two, this is governed by federal law. The magnets weren't. And we would find ourselves in another bind. So I, I, what I'm saying is I support what you're suggesting. We, we can't just turn around at the end of year three and say, oh, we did our work and let it, let it end. This, this is a big deal. And with a lot of money, if you look at that line, it's a whole lot.
It is. You're, another way to frame this is you're currently spending almost 25% of your budget on 15% of, of the students with special needs. So it is a very high-ticket item. It's, it's one that every school district in our state is struggling with, given the, given Connecticut's approach to, to special ed aid, which is not as, as great as other states. approach to special ed aid, which is not as great as other states. But, you know, every time we make a savings, and the outside placements are a good example, we're not saving that money. We're putting that money back into the program. And so the more we can do of that, you know, we can strengthen, continue to strengthen our program. So we're not anticipating any budget reduction here, any cost reduction. We are anticipating cost containment and improvement of quality as a result of these savings going into in-district programs.
Can I just piggyback on your question? Do we have a sense, and forgive me if you already touched on this and I didn't understand it, that half million dollars, is there a particular set of programs that people are re-entering here in district when they're coming from an out-of-district placement?
Overall, the students are aging out and are not being replaced. Really a student that's been placed in, I guess, eight, nine years, and last year we're going to transition that student. But the younger students are not, as program options are developed, are not being outplaced at the same level, and our numbers have come down. But the students who continue to be outplaced are students with very, very intensive or highly unique needs. They're never going to plan to serve 100% of the students. They're medically fragile or have such unique, intense needs that they need.
So that savings is aging out rather than bringing people back?
And bringing, and bringing children back.
Do you have a sense of the percentages?
Many students who are planning to expand our high school offerings for students, I've already spoken about the 18-21 year old program, and our focus on the dyslexia clinic, data-based decision-making around AVAs and that level of service along, you know, with co-teaching, quality co-teaching programs. People want their children.
The spending 25% on the 15%, does that compare to?
It's very comparable. Comparable statewide.
The Connecticut School Finance Project has a good graph you can look at.
All right, Tom?
Okay, so we're going to switch gears.
I get three months' break when the council.
You guys had a chance to change the charter and change its budget.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the capital budget request now, which is also before you tonight. And we emailed out or, and posted, I guess, on the agenda package, the actual request that, draft request that has gone to the city by December 31st, as required by code from the superintendent. We've also given you copies of the presentation we're going to walk through here, and both of those documents are also available in the back of the room for the public. So the capital budget, fortunately, is not as difficult an issue, I think, for us this year as last year. Last year was really the heavy lifting on the capital budget. So the capital budget is very much based on the adopted five-year plan that was ultimately agreed to between the board and the city as part of the capital budget adoption last year. So all of these projects will essentially look familiar to you and are essentially consistent with the plan that was approved and put together last year. It does incorporate a new fifth year of the plan. The city has a five-year capital planning horizon per city code, and so there is now a new fifth year added to the plan fiscal year 2223. So I put requests in there for 2223. The first couple of projects we'll talk about are projects that, again, were talked about extensively last year. The renovate-as-new project at 46 Concord Street, the current Columbus school, as well as the renovate-as-new project at Jefferson School. And the requests that are in this capital budget for next year are exactly the same amount of money as was in the plan that was ultimately agreed to last year with the city. The third sort of major project that's in here is a compilation of projects that are really for all the rest of the schools. Let me back up for a moment, because I think there was a question that at some point I think I'd seen raised about the Nathaniel Lealie School project and the PONUS Ridge Alteration and Addition project. Both of those projects were approved last year, fully funded last year. We now know or expect that they're going to be shortly on the priority list that will be going to, or they're on the priority list that's going to the legislature, and the legislature will be acting on in this session. So both of those projects are funded and are moving forward. Therefore, you don't see them on this list because they're already funded and sort of on the track and moving. The facilities master plan, capital needs implementation, is all of the other projects for the other schools. And this was an area where, in order to sort of reach an agreement with the city about how much the city felt they could afford over a five-year period, there were a number of compromises made here. So let me just sort of refresh people's memories, or if you weren't, you know, on the board at the time. Silver Petraselli came in, did a very comprehensive and full facilities master plan. Their facilities master plan was actually a 10-year plan. And it was a plan that, I believe it totaled, I think the total recommendation was about $350 million over a 10-year period, if I remember the number correctly. Ultimately, what got approved for the five-year period from fiscal year 1718 to 2122 was a, you know, scaled-back plan that was about 100 and 150 something million. And it equated to $130 million of net bonded cost to the city. And so that was the plan that the city agreed to that included Nathaniel Lealie, it included PONUS, it included Jefferson, it included the renovation of Newt Columbus, and then it included these projects in the capital needs implementation. And what was included in the capital needs implementation, Silver Petraselli had recommended items with a ranking of priority one to priority four. And what was initially included was priorities one through four for the middle schools, other than PONUS, because PONUS was already scheduled to undergo renovation. So priorities one through four at the other three middle schools, priorities one through four at Cranberry and Fox Run, but then only priorities one and two at the remaining middle schools. Silver Petraselli had also recommended, as part of their 10-year plan, the overall plan recommended a number of other things. One of the other things that was recommended, that was not included in the funding last year, was the building of separate cafeterias from gymnasiums at those elementary schools, where there is not presently a separate cafeteria from gymnasium. And the Silver Petraselli recommendation was predicated on the notion of equity, that there ought to be, you know, some equity between the elementary schools in this regard. Since that time, of course, our strategic operating plan has also come into play with respect to recommending that we make improvements to our dining environment and make our dining environment more inviting and less institutional, and make it more welcoming, less noisy, and all of those things. And how that sort of played out in the recent past was the project at Rowatton, the cafeteria project at Rowatton, which recently was finished up, mostly done over the summer, was directly getting at that point. Previously, the district had constructed a separate gymnasium there, so the old gymnasium became essentially just a cafeteria. And then that renovation project was designed to make that cafeteria more inviting, and the strategic operating plan talks about doing that, you know, in the rest of the district. So I'm going to talk a little bit further about that, but I just wanted to kind of lay that groundwork. So other points to make here, again, trying to be consistent with the agreement that was struck between the board last year and the city last year about what's going to be funded and the magnitude of funding over this initial five-year period from 201819, or 1718 to 202122. The facilities master plan had a total in that five-year period of 35.477 million. What I've presented to you here totals exactly that same 35.477 million over that initial five-year period. Of course, I've added a new sixth year, because we've added one year to the plan. The requests that are included in the last year of the plan 2223 total 10.4 million, and as I'll talk about in a moment, a lot of those requests are geared toward this issue of trying to create this equity and build separate cafeterias from gymnasiums.
Whatever goes to the other agencies, the council and the debt, perhaps an asterisk next to that number would explain it, if it's not clearly explained someplace else. That's all.
Okay.
Because we expected, they expect about between five and seven every year, and this is a departure from that. And it's something they would actually say, oh, and something to think about, instead of saying, what's going on?
A couple of other points before I get on to the next slide. The plan, one of the things we sort of learned over the course of the last year, the original plan with respect to this $35.5 million, my original thinking was, well, let's try to chunk it up into equal amounts, as much as we could, make them as equal as possible each year. And after kind of, after sort of working through this over the course of the last year and, you know, starting to get into some of these projects, one of the things that we've realized is that the, some of these projects are going to be eligible for state reimbursement, some of them won't. Pieces of the projects will be eligible, pieces won't. The pieces that are not eligible for reimbursement, we can sort of move forward with at our own pace and do as quickly as we're able to move those projects forward. But for the projects for which there is state reimbursement, we have this state schedule that says that in order to apply for a state school construction grant, you must submit the, what's called the SGC 049, which is a grant application form, by June 30th of any given year. It then goes through this year-long process, which is what's happening right now with our Nathaniel Lealie project and the PONUS project, and then ultimately gets approved. You cannot submit the SGC 049 unless you have the full appropriation in place. And so I've recommended now aggregating these amounts that are funded for the entire school, that's proposed for the entire school, rather than stretching a project over two or three years, because we can't really get it going until all the money's in place anyway. And I think I've already addressed the last point about the cafeterias. There are some other items in the capital budget. I'll try to move quickly. Curriculum textbooks and materials, and again, we've already had the discussion. At this point now, the capital request, which is fairly limited for textbooks, is limited to the initial rollout of new district curriculum materials, not ongoing items like, you know, consumables and so forth. Those have been moved to the operating budget. There is a district technology request. I think Ralph is here, if there are questions on that. We've continued the request for $200,000 for capital repairs, which is really for emergency repairs at our facilities, and that's been really invaluable for us to address things that just aren't expected. They come up, but they need, you know, heat in a building, obviously you've got to take care of it immediately. District paving, we've continued at the same request that, of $350,000 a year, which is what was in the agreed plan with the city. That also allows us to start to really make headway on ADA issues, which we were really behind the curve on that one, and we're making some real progress there. We do have a new, one new request, or there's three new requests in here. The first one is for Norwalk High School band uniforms, relatively small amount of money, $94,000. The current uniforms are worn, tattered, over 10 years old, they need to be replaced. And the band is asked for a capital appropriation to replace them, and we've included that here. Energy conservation, again, relatively small request. We'll look at the numbers in a moment. Comes from Bill Hodel to implement energy conservation improvements that were recommended as part of a retro-commissioning that was done at Norwalk High School and Bryan McMahon High School. And those are projects that have a clear, comfortable payback, a quick payback period on them. And finally, there's a small request in here from, again, facilities for the replacement of a couple of vehicles over the five-year period that have, have or are reaching the end of the fiscal life. So this is a summary of the projects, and so again, the, I'm referring to the school as 46 Concord Street School, because I think there, and the board will have to make some decision, but I think there's, I've heard there's some interest in Columbus maintaining the name when they move over to the new school. In any event, not a decision that needs to be made tonight, but I'm referring to it here as 46 Concord Street. That's the renovate-as-new project at the existing Columbus school building. We put in a request for $400,000 for 1819. The $400,000 is to do preliminary design work. And this is really just to get the ball rolling, to make sure that we've got good cost estimates, to make sure that we've got some assistance to help get the ed specs done, because remember, the ed specs also need to be submitted with that SGC 049. So we put in $400,000 for the 46 Concord Street School and Jefferson School as sort of seed money on those projects. With the, in 1819, we would be spending that money, you know, up to and through the spring of 2019, and then get an appropriation or request an appropriation for the large portion for those projects in the following fiscal year, 1920, of 20 million, 20.5 million, and 23.7 million respectively. So then the full appropriations would be in place on anticipated state grant reimbursement filing in June of 2019. Just for the record, last year, the plan that was circulated out there had those amounts combined and had them all in 1819. But based on the construction schedule for the new school at Nathaniel Lealie, as well as the construction schedule for the PONUS addition, these projects, we wouldn't be in a position to move forward with construction until those other schools are complete, because students have to move from one school to the other while the new school, while the old school is being renovated. And I'll show you in a moment, the, sort of the schematic, if you will, on how that construction cycle works. But there was a move in years on the large funding request for those projects, but the total amount over the five-year period remains the same. The facilities master plan, I've got a detailed schedule on that. And again, this incorporates the new, final, last year, the first four years are exactly the same amount, in total, are exactly the same amount that had been requested over that four-year period. I did move around the years that funding was requested in, and I'll get into that further in just a moment when I bring up the schedule on the detailed schedule on the facilities master plan. Again, curriculum materials, now it's a small request of $149,000 for next year. District technology, and I don't know if there's any questions on this, but there is an increase that's been requested in district technology from Ralph, and he can speak to that. Capital repairs, paving, band uniforms, energy conservation, and vehicles kind of round out the request.
I do have a question on technology.
Okay.
That I brought up before, and I just want to know if it's, who brought it up over there, we need to discuss here, a question of cybersecurity. It's going to be an issue we have better sooner than later, you know, no matter how you cut it, and it's not cheap. And it's, it's, it's not cheap. And you can't, cutting corners and all of that can be a disaster.
Ralph, do you want to come up and address that?
So the question for me is, I'm assuming this is, there has been discussions, but I'd like to know, is there, do you envision a plan evolving or some kind of way to address this expensive but important problem?
Yeah, no, definitely. I mean, if you really look at a lot of the research that's out right now, higher ed and K-12 education is probably the number two industry that's being hit by cyber hacks at the moment. Number one is healthcare. And this isn't going to change over time. A lot of the increases that you do see in my, in my operational budget, as well as continually replacing old equipment, which is the best way to handle yourself around cybersecurity, is making sure that, and it's the same thing with your personal stuff. Keep your stuff patched, keep it up to date, make sure that you're doing what you need to be doing, and don't, don't let those things fall. Because that, that allows for threats to kind of enter any of your devices. But we're making sure that we kind of keep that going on the capital side with replacement of access points, replacements of the switches and so forth. On the operational side, we've actually implemented very different antivirus software this last year, and it's going to need to continue. Company, it's a company that's used by many, many companies now called Silance. It actually manages at a very different level. It doesn't just fix the end user machine, it actually predicts and looks at your whole environment and looks for those types of issues like phishing, you know, whether it's email phishing, or whether it's people trying to get into your, into your system. We typically get on phishing on a typical day, at least 500 to 600 attempts at getting into our network daily. So, you know, so we are mitigating it very well. We're also looking at reorganizing from a structural standpoint and from an operation standpoint. I will be looking at having somebody that's almost full-time doing the security and Wi-Fi this year. So we'll be actually making sure that that becomes, our network infrastructure manager needs that extra assistance to be able to look over that. So we are looking at reorganizing the way that we actually do business. And as we move everything to cloud-based services, we're pulling in some of those resources here internally to make sure that we do that and develop knowledge for this.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, this was the timeline I mentioned. So this lays out, you can see the first two projects, Nathaniel Leely and Ponus are in design now. We would expect them to be in construction starting next year and in construction for two years. We would begin preliminary design work in 1819 on 46 Concord Street and Jefferson, full-scale design in 1920, and then construction the following year. And that coincides with the occupancy at Ponus and Nathaniel Leely. The students then move from the current Concord Street building to Nathaniel Leely so that you can go into construction at Concord Street, same thing with Jefferson. So that's the basic timeline. This is the breakdown on the capital needs implementation. And again, over the 2019, 2021 and 22, so the next four years, when added to the appropriation that was already put in place for 2018, totals exactly that $35.5 million that was part of the agreement. I have rejiggered some of the numbers and consolidated them into single projects, as I indicated. So for instance, Norwalk High School, previously I had that funded over a three-year period. I've now put that in at $5 million for next year. In addition, there was 1.5 million that was actually already funded in the current fiscal year. So that would make a total of 6.5 million available for Norwalk High School. You may recall the original estimate included about $4 million for the reskinning of the entire building. And it's now, you know, after sort of working through the subgroup with the parent group, I think painting is probably going to be a more realistic option that we are actually, one of the things we're doing on Norwalk High School is we've broken the project down into two phases. The first phase, we would expect to take place as soon as this summer, and will incorporate those projects for which we don't believe there is any state reimbursement that's going to be available. So for instance, one of the things they've identified is that the sound system in the auditorium needs to be upgraded and replaced. Well, that's something we're working on now and hope to actually have that done and in place before the end of this school year. There are a number of other projects that have been identified, including dealing with the appearance of the building, painting, dealing with the paneling as you go down the hallways, dealing with the courtyards and trying to make the courtyards usable again. None of these are things that we think there's going to be state reimbursement on. Interior doors that need to be refinished and reworked, and rehabbing the freight elevator and, you know, other things, pieces of work there that have identified that are not going to be eligible for reimbursement. And then that will leave for the following year, projects that we would anticipate that there is likely to be some reimbursement on, which would be projects that address things like, probably would be ADA-type projects. So the bathroom renovation was one of the things that had been recommended by Silver Petroselli, was complete bathroom renovation, and many of those bathrooms don't meet ADA standards. You've got other projects renovating the cafeteria to make it more based on a college experience. Again, that would be in, in phase two. Locker rooms as an area that have been identified, I don't think that may actually be eligible for reimbursement, but we'll look. The library maker space and redoing the library. So there's a number of renovating the lower-level shop area for use, student use, sprinkling, there's portions of the building that are not sprinkled, and that was in the Silver Petroselli recommendation. There's been a request to consider a second kitchen for the culinary program. So these are all things that would be part of this $5 million appropriation. Because there was some additional funding available to repurpose if we're not going forward with a full reskinning of the building, I looked at that as an opportunity to try to address sooner rather than later the inequity in the cafeteria and gymnasium situation at Cranberry. And that's the primary reason that you see the increase in Cranberry. Cranberry had previously been planned for a total appropriation of about $4.4 million. Now with the addition of funding for a separate cafeteria, it would be moved up to $7.5 million all at once. So the hope would be to submit EDO 49s for Cranberry and Norwalk High School by June 30th of this year, with those projects able to go into those construction projects the following summer.
Tom, can I just interject for one minute?
Yes.
I know we talked during our, we spoke during our facilities meeting about Norwalk High School reskinning versus
Right.
Painting. So there was another subcommittee, and they discussed possibly going the route of painting, which would be a lot more cost-effective
Right.
Than reskinning the whole building. But were we looking at it every 10 years? We discussed painting because that's, it's not a long-term
Yeah, it probably would be, probably would have to, you know, plan on doing it every 10 years. I would think so.
So the overall feeling was painting it versus reskinning?
Yeah, I mean, the reskinning, as I said, I think was about a $4 million job, and I think the painting is estimated at about $400,000, so.
But I don't think the decision was really
Well, they talked, I know, in a subgroup.
Driven just by cost, but I think there was a lot of concern about reskinning
Yeah.
That that would require some maintenance of its own.
Yeah.
Reskinning was not like a, you know, kind of a permanent, maintenance-free
Those concerns.
Yeah, in fact, Alan Lowe, I know, has expressed some concerns about
He talked about that, yeah.
Because of the fact that it can, you can have, water can end up leaking behind the reskinned surface, causing problems that have to be dealt with later.
But I think it's more the exterior, but I think Norwalk High School, as we know, for years, definitely needs a lot of work. That's, I mean, it's just major work.
I think the fact that the painting option came from the parents is a wonderful thing. And it frees up funds to do these other things that were also part of their proposal that we did not have funding for.
We're looking at the exterior of the building, and when you're driving, you're in Strawberry Hill, you're just sitting, you know, it just needs work. That's where you start, and then there's other projects that obviously need to get done.
So we know that several board members have been concerned about Norwalk High School, and I think that has been the impetus for moving this
Yeah.
To the next year. And, you know, in second place has been the situation at Cranberry, which is one of our largest and most successful schools that has not been touched virtually since inception.
Can I ask you a question about, take Cranberry for an example, how many lunch periods are there?
I think there's three. I would have to check to be sure.
And how, how many periods are there in this whole day?
Well, at the elementary level, you have a 90-minute reading block, and you have a 90-minute math block, and then you have a lunch and a recess, and that leaves some time in the afternoon for science or social studies or some other activities. It's not necessarily divided into periods.
My point is that the idea, I don't buy the selling this with, to create a nicer dining environment. You cannot have gym while the kids are eating lunch. You can't rehearse for a play while the kids are in gym.
It's very inefficient.
Yes. You can't do that stuff. It's just chaos. And so it's, it's nice environment, nice environment to eat, that's fine. But that's not the strongest way to sell this. We need, and we're talking about in our high schools and everything to expand our arts programs and everything, and we have a situation, gym's a little different, you go outside for most of the year. But we have those stages that you just can't really use for three periods. And for classroom, classroom projects, for school projects, you can't use them. That's a much bigger issue, I think. And that's, that hasn't been stressed enough, is my opinion. What I'm saying is, I think we need to separate the cafeterias from those two schools.
So we have, we have two other schools that have separate cafeterias, Kendall and Fox Run. So Kendall, you'll notice on this schedule, would have the replication of the Relighton dining environment next year. And then perhaps the year after, we would, we would look at Fox Run. Then it will be a matter, in the schools that have cafeterias added, of constructing those environments in a way that conforms to our wellness initiative now. And, you know, these are food stations as opposed to food lines, and, you know, the family-style dining, the round tables, you know, quiet environment and so on.
And I worked at a school which was built in 1904, and the auditorium was bigger than West Rox in the stage. That means they had their priorities right. The dining, the cafeteria was the cafeteria and nothing else. There were bigger problems, but, I mean, we have, you have to go back and look at that. That's important, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
Assembly isn't everything else. I mean, just, you just need it.
Can I add, again, picking back, two points. The first is that we have a state law that requires 20 minutes of gross mortar play at recess, and when we have indoor recess, we have no room in most of these buildings to do that. So that's another selling point in terms of having a separate cafeteria. I would point out that Cranberry recently added a substantial divider that can be opened or closed to their stage so that it can be used to teach strings while there's a gym class happening. And I think that that's something to look into rolling out to other schools if they have that shared situation, gym-stage situation.
Okay, the only other thing I want to point out, again, I added the last year, 2022, 23, and you'll see 4.4 million for Narimac. That, again, is to create a separate cafeteria. You'll see almost 6 million for Wilfit. That's to create a separate cafeteria, and that's also to do the priority one to four items that have been identified in the Silver Petroselli report at Wilfit. And I'm almost done. Couple, we've already talked about this, but since the original draft of this was put together, we have, and superintendent just alluded to it, we felt that the district needs to move, you know, with some deliberate speed in terms of addressing the strategic operating plan's recommendation to replicate the model that we put in place at Relighton School in terms of improving the dining environment and cafeteria environment. And so we are recommending a change to the original documents that came out here. I'm also just raising an issue for discussion, and that is whether or not, you know, we scaled these projects back to sort of meet a budget objective, and many of them, you know, by limiting a project to priority one and two, on some of them, it may raise a question whether you're better off just waiting a year or two and doing priorities one, two, three and four all together, even if it means you push it out to, you know, year six or year seven. So, you know, for instance, I'm looking at Brookside School at $155,000 in 2022. That may be one where it may make sense, unless there's something that really is so critical in that 155 that has to be done now, but if had to be done now, then I presume we'd be doing it now. You know, there's about another, I believe it was another million dollars in priority three and four projects. It may make sense to say, well, let's try to do priority three and four in 2024, and roll priority one and two into the project and just do it all together. But the thing I did want to point out here is, as superintendent indicated, we think it's important to have at least one school that we're able to go forward with a cafeteria project on during this coming summer, summer of 2018. And so I am recommending that we find a way to rejigger the numbers to provide, at this point, $275,000 for Kendall to do that. The way I did that was Kendall previously, in the earlier iteration, had $331,000. That was just for priority one and two items. And what I've suggested is take priority one and two, add priority three and four to it, but move it out to 2023, but then do the $275,000 renovation project now for the cafeteria. That would allow the cafeteria project to go forward now, and it would, you know, allow five years from now for priorities one, two, three and four to go forward, and still leave us in the same place in terms of that commitment to the city through 2022, what the total funding request from the board was going to be.
Do you have all off the top of your head what those priorities were for Kendall? I don't have that.
For Kendall, yeah, we, there is, there's about a 60-page document, and I just didn't want to overwhelm you with too much paper, but if you're, if you want it, we can, we can certainly make it available. Let's see, Kendall is... Let's see where is Kendall? Okay, Kendall has the bigger items, let's see, brick is spalling in some areas, some chimney issues have effor, efforescence. You've got $150,000 for renovation of pre-K toilet rooms. You've got egress doors, creating vestibules for egress doors. You've got $50,000. We've also got other bathrooms that have not been renovated for ADA compliance, at $200,000. Underground fuel storage tank, $150,000. Building management system at $100,000. Some fire alarm issues, and that's about it. But it totaled, yeah, priority one and two was $331,000, priority three and four was $575,000. So again, this is kind of getting to the issue of, does it make sense to do a $330,000 project, or should you just roll them together and do a $900,000 project and get them all done at once?
I guess I wonder, can that brick situation or the chimney situation wait five years, or will it deteriorate more and become a more expensive project?
Well, I mean, I think that's a question I guess an engineer would have to ask. It looks like, you know, the priority, that was listed as a priority three project by the, by the engineer.
Which in that priority three was not safety-related, not
Which meant priority three was not safety-related, not
Right.
Urgent, you know, didn't have to be done.
Yeah.
I can't remember the exact definitions, but
It wasn't going to cause damage?
But one and two were like
Safety matters, electrical
There were certain things, like, there was something they proposed for Wolfit, there was something they proposed for Marvin, which really, based on my experience, having done a lot of construction, seemed a little under.
And I think outside of the Cranberry and Norwalk High School commitment next year, which is going to require your approval, I think these other issues regarding bundling of projects are really an issue for the facilities committee. And as you mentioned, Barbara, in some cases, they have to be informed by professional study and judgment.
Just one last point, one of the sticking points last year, and when you're moving money around, there's this, as you well know, this arbitrary debt service amount in our operating budget. We don't want to go too high above 10%. And so that's got to be a factor in what we're doing. If it evens out over a period of time, that's okay, but I know for a couple of years, we want to do around 12% during the next five years, which was okay, which is okay with me, but we can't be oblivious to that.
Yeah, I agree, but, you know, I think on these projects here, they're generally of a small enough size that I don't think it's going to move the needle much in terms of the overall percentage. And the bigger projects are, you know, sort of already set. And the city borrows money based on the actual construction drawdown schedule that's prepared for the project. So even though the appropriation may be put in place now entirely for the Ponus project and Nathaniel Lealie project, the city will only borrow the money as it's needed, or, you know, the projected amount that's needed for each fiscal year. So it does get spread out no matter what.
Right, but it does have an impact on other projects that the city may be looking at, whether it relates to the library, and how long a timeline it is to. The debt service, what we do here in our capital expenses, has some bearing on what the city can do regarding other capital projects. So that's the issue.
Speaking of that, we have a meeting that is scheduled with the mayor to brief him on your budget, both operating and capital. That will occur after you approve it. We tried to do it for the Wednesday, for tomorrow, and he was not available. We do have that scheduled, and we will continue to cooperate, collaborate, work with the city, you know, to achieve something that is good for our schoolchildren, as well as sensitive to the taxpayers of the city and within the overall priorities of the city.
Barbara, just FYI, I just looked up on the Silver Petraselli study, so, I mean, we spent $8 million in 2003 at Kendall. So, I mean, that is 14 years ago, 15 years ago now, but when you look at other schools, that's one of our more recent renovations. So, you know, it should be in reasonably good shape.
We had to do the roof, too, right?
Yeah, that includes, the roof was also, the roof was done in '02 and '03.
The roofs have all been done.
I would just say, you were talking about adjusting allocations to increase equity in these schools and districts, and I think equity and the perception of equity is something that might be considered in terms of waiting or not waiting for the priority one to four. The schools at the top of the list have a more communicative parent bodies, and you might run into a perception of less than equitable. You know what I mean? Like this would be a real issue.
And I think, I think those of us who are the guardians of the school system, right, need to be sensitive to that, because that may not just happen organically.
Speaking of this.
Point will take. All right. Going once, twice, three times for questions now. Again, where we leave this is in your hands in terms of both budget documents. If you have questions beginning tomorrow and through next Wednesday, and through next Monday evening, if you could send those to me, copied, with a copy to Tom, and we will attempt to respond almost immediately, within a few hours or a day, to you specifically, but to the entire board in general. And then any opportunity to make adjustments to the recommended budget would occur next Tuesday evening before you send it out to the council.
And the finance committee does have a meeting scheduled for Thursday as well, and the items for discussion are the budget. So, you know, certainly if you're on the finance committee or planning to attend the finance committee, a couple of questions as well to, on operating capital budget to that meeting.
And per charter, we will be vote, the committee will be voting on that to the full council.
To the full board.
To bring it to the full board.
Sorry. Keep those bodies straight. Okay, well, that
That's a very good procedural point that you should have mentioned. You're actually going to be voting on the recommendation of the finance committee, as opposed to my recommendation, which you received this evening.
We're going to ignore your recommendation. Okay, and so now we will conclude the work session, and if there are any public comments, I don't know if there was any there, I don't really see any members in the public cell. My guess is there probably aren't any public comments.
It's empty.
It's empty, okay, thank you, Marilyn. And so I think I would suggest that we take a five-minute break before we go into a brief executive session.
Do you want to start with the motion? Typically, we vote to go to executive session, then take a break.
Okay.
I move that we go to executive session for the purpose of discussion of confidential documents related to a collective bargaining matter and authorization of charity.
Thank you, and seconded by Mr. Brian Meek. We'll take a five-minute reset.
Two-thirds vote required.
Oh, we have a vote, sorry.
Hi.
Unanimous vote to go into executive session.